All right, I'd like to call the Ansonia Board of Aldermen meeting for March fourteenth order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
S twenty two ultra. Thanks, all right, Trish, can we get a roll call? You're muted, Trish.
Better?
Yep.
There you go.
All right, Alderman King.
Here.
Alderman Stowe. Is he here? Alderman Adamowski.
Here.
Alderwoman Tar.
Here.
Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Janetti.
Here.
Alderman Knott. Is here, I see him. Alderman Yowman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman Mammon.
Here.
Alderman Schur.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell. Alderman De Libro. You have ten present, three absent, and one vacancy.
All right, I declare quorum. Before we start, I'd like to add one item to take up under old business. I think there's one item in old business, so we'll add that at old business number two. Two eighty-three North Main Street, and I'll discuss that when we get to it. And a motion.
Motion to add.
Motion by Mammon, add to agenda.
Second.
Second by Cassetti on favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Right, thanks. All right. We have the minutes that were in your packet from the January tenth regular meeting. Your pleasure.
Make a motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved by Rivers, second by Cassetti. Any changes or additions, edits? All in favor?
All.
All.
Posed or abstaining? All right, motion carries. Let's see, I got eight million papers here. Let me catch up here. All right, so we're going to move into public sessions. Just a couple ground rules as usual. Anyone can speak publicly to address the Board of Aldermen tonight. Each speaker is limited to one time speaking. As always, it's not a Q and A, but if you provide your name and address also for the public record and also for potential follow-up, and because we have so many agenda items, as always, please limit your speeches or comments to three minutes or less. So thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to speak tonight?
I'm not sure if I would have to address it here or not. I know we're on the agenda for later, but I'm Jamie Wyler for the cheer board.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take that up later if you want to stick around.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to double check where you wanted me. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Looking around. Second call, anyone from the public? Anyone see any hands up? All right, third and final call for public session. Seeing none, we'll close the public session and move on to public official session. Mayor Cassetti.
Good evening, President Stewart, members of the Board of Aldermen and residents of the great city of Ansonia. The luck of the Irish is with us tonight as we miss the Ides of March by one day. I know we will have a very good meeting tonight as a result. And to kick off the meeting with good news, I am proud to announce my appointment of Tim Holman as Public Works Superintendent in Ansonia. Tim will be the first African-American Superintendent of Public Works. Tim is an eighteen-year veteran of the Public Works Department, and he has served ten years as the Union Stewart. He is the proud father of four children and nine grandchildren and a member of the Hilltop Hose Company. He is a longtime resident of Ansonia. I fully support Tim and expect that this board will empower staff to finalize the contract in the next few days to enable Tim to lead Public Works with his expertise and experience. We will be in good hands. Another noteworthy item is that there will be a groundbreaking on Olson Drive next week. I'm asking all the Board of Aldermen members, please be present during this great thing of announcing and doing the groundbreaking, all right? Invitations will be going out. Next month, we will be holding a public hearing for the start of the State Street project. We finally received comments from COG and DOT, and will be moving forward with the final design for construction. Bids will be returned this week for the installation of the playground equipment at the splash pad. We did not go any further last season with installation because the winter weather prohibited the contractor from moving forward with the freeze. This spring, we will, we will finish the remainder of the work and will be opening the splash pad for the summer season. I would ask Alderman Rivers and Alderman Yowman to make sure your swim trunks are a little more up to date to accommodate the extra winter weight that may have been accumulated.
For wow.
Some exciting news to announce regarding our River Walk. Although it is not official, I believe that we will be receiving a grant for our next segment of the River Walk, which extends down Olson Drive and along the river to ACB, Ansonia Copper and Brass. Demolition of the brick building that runs along North Main Street will occur this week, so stay tuned. You will hear more from John and Sheila regarding these projects and grants. I know we are still waiting on numbers from the state as well as looking at all the cuts to our municipal budget from the state as well as rising costs to the pension plan. Kurt will speak to the state unfunded mandates and requirements and what strain that places on municipalities like Ansonia. And we'll discuss the timing of the budget as we are still waiting on numbers before I present the budget. We are planning on a full opening of the Senior Center in May, but please wait for official confirmation. The Senior Center is amazing if you have not seen it, and I know that Christine and Jeff are busy working on scheduling. I know they are busy. I stopped by for a corned beef and cabbage last week with the seniors, and we are all looking forward to the official opening. We had a wonderful St. Patrick's Day event this past Saturday. Thank you to all who attended and to the Cultural Commission and Public Works and everyone who helped out. I want to wish everybody, all of you, a happy St. Patrick's Day this Friday, and I will leave you with this quote. May your glass be ever full. May the roof over your head always be strong and may you be, wait a minute. Roof over your head be always strong, and may you be in heaven a half hour before the devil knows you are dead. I think that's a Kurt Miller quote. That's where I put it in there. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, Corporation Counsel John Marini.
Mr. President, members of the board, good evening. Want to congratulate Tim Holman on his appointment to Public Works Director. Tim and I have worked between each other in his capacity as Union Stewart in the past. And I know that when it came to representing the employees, he always did so with integrity and fairness. And he seems to be the perfect balance to be able to represent both the interest of our hard-working Public Works employees and also from the management side, ensuring our Public Works Department moves forward and serves the residents well. So congratulations to Mr. Holman. I want to update the board on a situation that had garnered some attention in meetings past, which is our scenic view, a revving motor issue. As you may recall, we had some residents complaining of a residence in the scenic view area that was continuously working on cars, tuning cars, all hours of the night and creating quite a disturbance up there. I'm happy to say that situation has been abated, it's been eliminated. I want to thank the owner of that property for finally complying with with the requests of our Blight Department and with my requests as Corporation Counsel. And I can happily report that that situation has been resolved. We went through quite a few issues legally last week. And we're going to talk about some other issues, including the contract issues later on in the evening. So for now, I'll take any questions.
The meeting ID number is eight four nine.
Here, Alderman Cassetti, although I don't think I'm supposed to be here.
Cassetti. Five five seven seven.
So as he gives out his, but hopefully it's not his social security number.
Get somebody, I think somebody's trying to get that again. Okay, any questions? Any questions for Council from the Aldermen?
Just to comment, John, that, you know, that car thing was a a big issue for the residents in that area, and I know how much they were pained by it, and, you know, they as well as the board appreciate all your efforts in bringing that into a resolution. Hopefully that will, you know, be, I guess, a good resolution for everybody involved. So thank you for your efforts.
Yep, no, thanks. I want to thank Rich De Carlo and Rhonda Perrini and our Blight staff as we did implement our Blight ordinance or to fix the problem. But of course, I also want to thank the homeowner that was actually the problematic property here as his voluntary compliance at the end of the day did resolve the situation. So I want to thank everyone involved for finally pulling together and doing what was right.
Any other questions for Corporation Counsel from the Aldermen? All right, I just commented, I was saddened that you didn't pick up on the Ides of March and either go with a either an Iron Maiden reference or, I don't know, some kind of Irish reference or something, but we'll just, we'll move on if there's no other questions. Economic Development, Sheila.
You were looking for a Led Zeppelin reference, right?
We were.
So, good evening, President Stewart, members of the Board of Aldermen. Lots to touch on, but I just wanted to say congratulations to the mayor's son and Alex Romanowski for being chosen, for receiving the Walter Camp Award, which if, I don't know if anybody, I'm sure most people are familiar with it, but if you're not, it's a national collegiate American Football Player of the Year award, so it's quite a distinction. And the mayor did not mention it, but I want to, I want to say congratulations to David Cassetti Jr. and Alex Romanowski. It's like quite an accomplishment. Let's see, Mayor touched on the River Walk, not official yet, but yes, we're probably going to be receiving a grant to to come up with the design for the next segment of the River Walk, so that's exciting. Demolition will probably be completed within the next two weeks, but that big brick building that the mayor mentioned is coming down this week if the weather remains good. So that's going to be, you know, you're going to have a total line of sight into Ansonia Copper and Brass, which hopefully will be starting to come, those buildings will start to come down as well. State Street, yes, public hearing in April. Stay tuned for that. I know Alderman Adamowski will be present along with others to understand that, the full depth of that project and how it will impact traffic, if any. We're trying to avoid that and the changes to come about with that project. Lots of grant opportunities coming up, which we will be taking advantage of in some of those. Second phase of the residential apartments is underway with five oh one East Main Street being remediated. So stay tuned for that as well. I think, I think I think that's it. Must anybody has any questions on any of the grants or projects?
Any questions from the Aldermen for economic development tonight?
Just to comment on the demolition, Sheila, it's simply amazing how, I guess, you know, it's a small percentage that have come down and they have a, you know, a pretty big opening in there, but just the way that that's transformed the area already, it's beyond exciting, beyond exciting, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Job to everybody involved.
Yeah, it really makes a difference, and that's just, you know, compared to Ansonia Copper and Brass, that's just a postage stamp size property. It's four, four and a half acres. And just to open that up just frees up space and it's, you know, it's kind of freeing actually. So, good point, thank you.
I think it was Darlene that said to see the sunlight come through there was kind of surreal, so.
Absolutely, yep.
I have a question for you, Ms. O'Malley.
I would think, I would think that you would not have any questions.
I do.
Alderman Rivers. Okay.
Can we get an update on the sidewalks in on Franklin Street?
Yep, there's, you know, there was a little hesitation on our part because the state, that's a state road, and the state informed us that they are doing complete drainage overhaul on that road. So we did not want to interfere with whatever they have going on, but it looks like we'll be able to, after speaking with DOT, it looks like we'll be able to proceed with that project, get it specked out, surveyed, and do the, at least do the sidewalks. And the road, I believe the road, the state is going to is in the process of designing the rework on the road. So hopefully soon, Alderman Rivers.
Thank you.
Josh, through you, if I could ask you a question?
Sure.
I just, I'm very happy to hear about the prospect of a public hearing on the State Street site. I think there is a lot of interest in this and a lot of input to be had. And I hope that whenever the city approaches a major project like this, we will have a public hearing before, you know, the design is complete and the work is initiated. So, so thank you for for this, and I hope there'll be the process that's followed in the future.
Yeah, thank you, and I look forward to seeing you and Alderwoman Tar there at the public hearing and others.
Any others? Any other questions for economic development from the Aldermen tonight? All right, thank you. Next up, CFO Kurt Miller.
Thank you very much, President Stewart, and good evening, everyone. I like to start my time off with a joke. Why should you never iron a four-leaf clover? Because you don't want to press your luck.
Press your luck.
Okay, very nice.
It's not Iron Maiden, Josh, but I did my best.
All right, next up, we have, we have, we still have to let you go after that.
Yeah, I have a few things to add.
All right, carry on.
You know, I'd just like to follow up John and Sheila and the mayor's comments about Tim Holman. I think he's going to do a great job just in his first two days of starting to work through things. He's already impressed me with the way he's he's kind of jumped in with both feet. So I'm truly looking forward to working with him, and I'm extremely happy to be passing the responsibility onto him, so. So with that, we'll get into the finance stuff. The fiscal twenty-two audit has been completed and was filed on February twenty-eighth. While we came across several unexpected challenges during the process, I am proud of the collective work and the effort that was done by both the city and the Board of Education Finance Staff. Being down key staff on the Board of Education side due to unforeseen long-term medical issues was a difficult hurdle to overcome. While we did not hit our goal of twelve thirty-one, what this process showed me was how far along and how strong the relationship between the city and the Board of Education has become. The two staffs worked seamlessly and tirelessly picking up the slack to get the job done. This is a credit to the relationship that has been fostered by Mayor Cassetti and Superintendent Tabaka. With the exception of a comment about the audit being filed late due to unforeseen medicals, we produced a clean audit. That is something that everyone should be proud of. We have already begun the process of prepping for the fiscal year twenty-three audit. We expect to hold a deep brief in mid-April, and from there, we will put together our plan and timeline. We continue to track closely our fiscal twenty-three budget. Due to outside forces and inflationary conditions, we have some lines that are trending negatively. As we monitor the lines, we are trying to make updates where possible to try to mitigate them as best we can. We do have several lines trending in a positive direction, so our hope is the offsets balance everything out. Finally, for the fiscal year twenty-four budget, my intention was to have the mayor present his budget to a joint meeting of vote in the Aldermen in early April. I'd like to push that out a few additional weeks to late April or early May. I expect to announce the budget workshops and public hearing dates at the April vote meeting. We are in the process of locking down numbers as best as we can, but due to market conditions and the economy in general, many vendors are waiting longer than normal to provide us with the numbers we need. I feel it is extremely important that the mayor's budget be as tight as we can possibly make it. And at this point, I don't feel comfortable with the estimates we have in several key areas. Currently, municipal funding is down about two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars from the governor's budget proposal, and we won't see the legislature's numbers until early June at best. Also, just yesterday, we learned of a massive increase in costs for the municipal employee's retirement system. Contribution for city employees jumped from seventeen point five five percent to nineteen point five seven percent, while contributions for our police officers jumped from twenty-four point eight two percent to twenty-nine point nine two percent, causing a budget increase of three hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars for this coverage alone. So we are getting little to no help from the state side at this point. We'll continue to crunch numbers and provide updates as we have them going forward. As you can imagine, this is put very difficult in front of us, getting dropped with an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollar additional expense that this late in the game is going to be extremely challenging. But I feel confident that it's something we will be able to work through. We have provided testimony. The mayor has on behalf through CCM challenging some of this. You know, I've reached out to our state delegation. Unfortunately, that fell upon deaf ears last year, and it is something that CCM has been pushing in its legislative agenda as long as I've been involved with CCM, so about eleven years or so now. Fortunately for this year, Comptroller Scanlon, who I give a ton of credit to, who met with all the mayors in first select and yesterday face-to-face to announce this news, we're generally in the past, we would just receive a letter or an email. But I, you know, I give him credit for stepping up to the plate and doing it face-to-face, but he has volunteered to put together a working group to try to fix MERS and to lead the charge in doing so. So hopefully, we will finally have someone in Hartford that's willing to fight for the towns and cities, because this is an absolute massive unfunded mandate that's been handed down by the state of Connecticut. So with that, President Stewart, I will turn it back over to you and take any questions anyone may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the Aldermen for CFO Miller tonight?
Maybe we could use some of that giant surplus at the state level to cover these, to cover some of these shortfalls that they keep passing on to the residents of the city, which is just absolutely ridiculous. It's ridiculous, guys.
Yes, it's quite frustrating that, you know, they're touting these surpluses and touting tax breaks. And the way they're able to do that is by cutting municipal funding and municipal aid and pushing more and more down to the city itself. It just makes absolutely no sense, but.
Right.
Anything else for Kurt tonight? Kurt, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll go ahead. My question is quick. The cheer representatives are here, and I know that we didn't act on it the last time because we were looking for an update as far as what the balances were. Are you going to be able to provide that or somebody tonight?
Yep, I have everything.
Because nothing to do with them.
All right, go ahead. Alderman Rivers.
Yeah, I was going to ask him, but I think I'm going to save that question for the budget time, so I'll have more than three questions.
While you're giving yourself an extra question this year, it's very aggressive.
Exactly.
Very aggressive.
Very generous of yourself.
Can't roll over your questions month to month, though, I thought.
But Chicago, if you'd like to ask a question now, I will let you reserve an additional one during budget time.
No, I'll take five questions then on budget time.
Any, anything else? All right, moving on. Police Chief Wayne Williams, thanks for coming.
Good evening, everyone, President. I'm going to keep my comments brief tonight. I had a whole spread here laid out about talking about our efforts and the effect that this massive nor'easter was having on our city today. So I guess I can skip all that because it never appeared. Congratulations in advance. I want to congratulate in advance, Mr. Douglas is on your, the mayor's appointment letter for his pending appointment to the Board of Police Commissioners later on this evening. I've met him, a very nice gentleman. I look forward to working with him and the rest of the board as we move forward. Personnel update, I've given you a couple of them over the last year. We are finally starting to get some of the officers through their training and out onto the road. Two additional officers left their field training yesterday and have been released to solo status. So they will, they will help add to the complement of officers that we've been short for a while. We have one more officer graduating next week from the Waterbury Police Academy, and we have four more that are about halfway through the New Britain Police Academy. So we're, we're starting to catch up. While we're doing that, we're also starting to backfill some of the openings for promotional opportunities that we've had that have been vacant. The detective sergeant position, which is an extremely important position here, has been open for the past year due to all the vacancies in the Patrol Division. So Sergeant Eric Sturgis is being promoted to the position of Detective Sergeant, and I invite you all to the swearing-in tomorrow if you'd like to come at City Hall at ten thirty. Contract negotiations are ongoing with the police union. And the budget process, I'm still working with Mr. Miller. We had long conversations yesterday about the MERS contribution, so that's an ongoing discussion with the upcoming budget. I did want to let you know the state DOT, like good news, has included us in a program they have. So those electronic speed signs that you've seen in other states and other towns that we've been trying to purchase, they run about five thousand dollars apiece. They've included us in a donation of those signs, so they're giving us two free signs as part of a program that we're involved in with the DOT, including with the free signs is free access to the stored traffic data that we'll be able to use. So we're supposed to be picking those up at the end of the month, and hopefully we'll have them installed in the next month or so in different areas of the town. In addition to that, Police Accountability Bill, we are still working on the accreditation examination that we have scheduled for July. We're moving towards tier one accreditation. As you're aware, this was another unfunded mandate by the state that we have to get to tier three accreditation. So we are, we are still working on this process. I have a lieutenant who's been working on that. And at some point here in the very near future, we'll be looking to move another person into that program to assist us. So if you have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Questions from the Aldermen for the chief? Oh, you're going to get off easy tonight.
Oh, that's awesome. No, he's. How you doing, chief?
I'm doing good. Alderman Rivers has everything.
Good, good. I just want to say that, that the squilling in the parking lot has become almost non-existent. And I wanted to know, when are, when are the gates going to start? Are you going to start locking the gates?
Oh, the gates are, they're locked every night.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, for about the last, I'm going to guess about six weeks. We have officers that go out, so we assign our officers to take care of it. So they go out at night, usually around like nine o'clock, and they shut the gates and lock them, and then in the morning, just around sunrise.
And uh, they shut the gates and lock them. And then in the morning, um, just around sunrise, the officers will go out there. And open them because we know people like to go up there in the morning to uh walk on the track, et cetera. So I will say that that has probably been why we've cut down. Uh, because there's nowhere to park up there. There's nowhere to actually, way to access that parking lot. Um, but I do want to let you know, yeah, we have been closing up for about the last six weeks.
Wow, so that tells you I go to bed early.
Yeah, you just don't drive that way uh before nine o'clock.
I drive that way all the time, you know, getting off the highway. But uh, yeah.
We try not to interfere with, you know, the people up there playing basketball, walking at the track, practices, you know, et cetera. But uh, yeah, around nine o'clock, we uh. We lock it up. Um, the signs are up there, so we haven't really run into any issues. Sometimes there's a car too that gets locked in there and they call us and we come up and open the gate. So really not, uh, really not been an issue up there.
Any other questions for the chief tonight? All right, thanks again for coming. Uh, next up, we have uh School Superintendent Dr. Joe DeBacco.
Uh, good evening, President Schur, Aldermen and all the women. How was everyone? I do want to say we um, we came out okay with a um, with the snow day today. Many superintendents uh made some calls otherwise, but um. We got the day in and I'm glad we got in safe. Uh, I do want to share, I never thought in a million years as the superintendent in Ansonia, number one, I would have. One state championship team, you know, our football team, but to have our cheerleading team win class S state champions uh as well. Uh, very, very exciting time to have two state championship teams. Um, they will be competing this weekend um in Massachusetts. Uh, we wish them well. Um, and we wish them uh good luck, but they have been looking phenomenal. Um, I was able to um have a, our mid-year alliance meeting. Our, our Lions district from the State Department of Ed, they do a walkthrough and uh pretty much want to determine. Why they give us a, alliance money and um we take them around to all our buildings. I, I believe we did well in our alliance uh meeting. We um have some, some areas where I, I keep asking if I could um. Maybe massage the alliance uh spending areas so I can um use it in some other areas, but that's something that myself, Mr. Bishara, always uh. Try to work on when alliance comes through. Um, so we have those things uh coming up at, at this juncture. And the other, only other thing is that uh of note, in both elementary schools, we have. What are called book vending machines. When our kids do well, you know, a traditional vending machine. Um, Laura Lane has donated a vending machine filled with uh books where kids get tokens and they're able to um. To purchase books based on good character, good attendance and um actually just. Being just an all-around great charger in general and uh kids are able to purchase books. So. Some of those, those are some of the exciting things that are happening. I have to say a big thanks to um. Do our finance department um working with um on the, with the city as well. Um, being down a finance director and uh my payroll uh clerk as well, it's, it's been very difficult. But uh, that collaboration piece is, has been great. And um, just on the city side, I know you guys deal with uh, with Mr. Bishara. He does sharpen that pencil every chance he gets, so um. I, I know quite well um what, what um, what we're working with. So, but I appreciate Mr. Bishara and. Mr. Miller and actually Kim on, on the city side as well. We thank you very much, but I'm here to answer any questions um that's. For the Alderman.
Any questions for Dr. Joe from Alderman tonight? Going once, twice? All right, and thank you again, as always, for coming to our meeting.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. All right, so, so ends the public official session. We'll move on to um reports. Committee reports. Uh, first up, Finance Committee. Anybody? Bueller?
Motion to pay all bills if uh, if deemed correct, Josh.
Okay, motion to pay all bills if deemed correct by Mamon. Second by Cassetti. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. Um, any other committee reports from the Alderman? Subcommittees? Perfect. All right, moving on. Um. We had two sets of uh boat recommendations in your packet um because of the timing of uh. Of our meeting. Uh, we have the February and the March uh boat recommendations.
Motion to accept February, the February boat recommendations.
Second.
All right, motion to accept February from Mamon, second by Janetti. Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, how about March?
Motion to approve the March uh recommendations as well, Josh.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Not, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries again. Uh, let's see, tax collector report. Uh, yeah, there was two also in your packet, uh, the January and the February. You're on a roll, Mamon, come on.
Motion to accept the January tax collector's report.
All right.
Second.
Motion to ca- uh, to accept the January tax, uh Mamon, second by Tar, all in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries. And then we have the February twenty-three tax collector report as well.
Motion to accept February twenty-three tax report.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Janetti, all in favor?
Hi.
Those are abstaining. All right, motion carries again. Uh, then we have the request for refunds. Again, we have two months, uh, February. In the amount of two-thousand uh ninety-nine dollars and thirty-six cents, if deemed correct, and we have the March. In the amount of one-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-six fifty-nine, if deemed correct.
Motion to accept February as noted.
Okay.
February by Mamon, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Hi.
Posed or abstaining? All right, motion carries in the March.
Motion to accept as noted for March.
Second.
Uh, Mamon, second by Tar, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion carries unanimously again. Uh, with the land use report in your packet. So one of the. Believe. Anybody? Motion to accept the, the uh land use?
Motion.
Motion by Cassetti. Come on, Janetti, I know you want to second this.
Come on. Second.
Second by Janetti, knew it. All in favor? Both? Extensions. All right, moving on. Thank you, that, that um carries as well. Uh, actions and claims, we had one claim, zero-one-dash-two-three-dash-one-zero-four-three. What's your pleasure?
Motion to refer to corporate counsel.
Motion to refer it by Tar, second by Mamon, all in favor?
Hi.
Substances? All right, motion carries again. All right, we have three communications. Uh, the first one is from me. This was the nomination for, to approve. Uh, Timothy Lembo as the incoming new fourth assistant chief of the fire department.
Motion to accept and approve.
Second.
Motion by Yamman, second by Mamon, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Second communication is from uh Israel Cologne. This was a request for a fee waiver of the proposed amendments to the zoning regulations.
Right. I um, I talked to Rhonda about this. And I guess, you know, we had attempted to revise the regulations to allow for chickens. On three or more acres of land. And I don't, I don't know uh exactly what happened, but I don't think we ever revised the regs. Mister Col- Cologne, Cologne, Cologne is looking to revise the regs and I. That I asked Rhonda and she said that that's generally the fee. You know, if someone wants to bring forth a tax amendment, they pay the thousand-dollar fee for that amendment. Um, I guess I would say in this instance, maybe there's an exception to be made because. We were going to revise them and went through the process. Um, but it never happened.
This is a mechanism that allows a consideration of that amendment. This is an amendment that the city has worked on, so the city does have a vested interest in finally having a substantive discussion about whether or not to move forward. Uh, my recommendation is to waive this because there is a mutual interest in um. In, in, in the very least, having the amendment that we've worked on discussed substantively. Um, having the public get a chance to weigh in and finally having some resolution on whether or not this use. Um, will now be um permitted in, in this manner. Um, this has been several years in the making, honestly, and um I, I certainly would recommend um, I, I, you know, waiving that fee because really. That step that the resident is uh making is really also in the, in the city's interest to finally have this discussed, finally get that public input and finally get the. Um, the board to, to make a decision. And of course, there's no guarantee on what they would decide or how, well, we, I even think this board, you know, making their opinion known would be great. But it's something um that's a very long time coming to have this discussion about this issue.
Josh, can I ask a question for clarification?
Absolutely.
Um, so the, the current zoning, this is a zoning regulation, correct?
That's correct.
Um, the current zoning regulation, excuse me, is uh three acres in order to have chickens?
Um, Steve, I think that, yeah. I, I believe that's accurate.
So if that's, if that's the case, uh, then, then what is the acreage uh in question here? The, the to allow chickens?
I believe that the, the, the board had looked at several different models and it's a little more nuanced than that. Basically, certain types. Of um, certain types of chickens and certain types of situations. Um, so it's a little more nuanced than just the amount of um acreage, but it definitely was. But obviously, if you take a look at the acreage in Ansonia and you take a look at the acreage on most lots, they're, they're not going to be able to um. To utilize their property in that, for that purpose, right? Um, in any situation, it's gonna rule a lot of individuals out. So the question is, is there some middle ground? Is there some way? To allow the use, but at the same time put safeguards in place, understanding that a lot of Ansonia is very dense. Um, and this is something that actually historically was the subject of some litigation over fifteen years ago. Um, by a couple, actually, a very passionate couple in, I believe, the Fourth Ward. Um, the uh, the, the husband actually passed away um as a result of a tragic, it was a visling accident. Um, and we always meant to visit, you know, to, to take this seriously and, and really revisit this issue and. A lot of work was put in, but it, it, the answer, Alderman Adamowski, is that it, it's less, but. It's a, it's more nuanced than just a, a certain amount less than that. There, there are certain restrictions in terms of how they're kept, the number, um, the way inspections would be done. Um, and I think there's still a lot of room to explore what the right mix would be. So it's not all or nothing. It's not just as proposed or not. I think this would lead to a bigger conversation as to what the right. Change would be, if a change, you know, would even be considered. I, I, I don't think there's any guarantee at all, again.
So, um, you know, a- as you may be aware, this is a big trend in urban homesteading, right? Um, uh, so I'm happy to see that these regulations are being looked at. And when do you um, have no problem, you know, proving the. Uh, the exception under the circumstances, but when, when do you think um you may have some, some revised regulations for adoption?
I think if this goes forward, I think, given again that these regulations were already worked on, I'm imagining that within the next month or so. Um, hearings could take place and the work of the prior work of the board could become available to the public and to this board. And of course, then the next step would be to seek input and really have a public conversation about it. Um, and it's po- very possible to have some sort of resolution by early summer.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions on this? Uh, so it's a request for the one-thousand-dollar fee waiver regarding the proposed uh amendments to the zoning regs.
I'll make a motion to waive that fee with the notion that is just to waive the fee, it does not. Um, indicate that we either support or do not support um the regulation change.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to waive the fee by Mamon and a second by Not. Any other discussion on this? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? Any extensions? All right, thank you guys for the background info on that. Uh, third communication is uh from Corporation Council. This was a request um. To transfer um earned funds for the creation of the Ralph Villers Cultural Commission Scholarship. You have, have anything you want to add beyond the letter that you sent?
Um, the Cultural Commission had helped sponsor a movie night over the summer. Um, this is one of the drive-ins that we did at Warsaw Park. Uh, the intention was to have some of the funds go to a scholarship fund. In the name of the late Chairman of the Cultural Commission, Ralph Villers. The idea would be that these funds would be available for a graduating senior who volunteered with our Ansonia Cultural Commission. Uh, at the suggestion of Mr. Miller. Um, there was a thought to create a line going forward for this, so we could properly budget for that use and keep track of it. Um, and so I believe that Kurt would recommend that not only, you know, if you're, if you're gonna go ahead with approving the transfer. You also maybe make a motion to create a line in the budget that would be for the Ralph Villers um Scholarship Fund. So that if this becomes a regular thing, it could be tracked and understood by the auditors and by the board as to exactly what's happening. And I think the idea would be if an, an, another occasion came where they would um. Volunteer and the city would take in some, some profit, for example, another movie night, that that's a small portion could be set aside. For um an award of a scholarship at graduation for the Ansonia High School.
All right, any questions from the Alderman on this? What do I do?
So Ralph was an amazing guy. You, you know, I've had the, the. Opportunity to speak to him several times before he passed away and he was just passionate about this process and then. Did a lot in this arena, so you know, I'd like, you know, kind of split it into two motions here. I'd like to make a motion to. Approve the transfer as noted um in the, in the Alderman package. Um. So that's, that's one motion.
All right, so motion to transfer the funds by Mamon and a second by Tar. Um, any further discussion on that? All right, I'll also note that uh I've known Ralph for, I knew Ralph for a very long time and this is like, this is a great, great tribute, so. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, and then your second uh motion is what?
Second motion, Josh, would be to authorize Kurt to add this into the, you know, budget ongoing, uh, you know, to kind of work that in and. You know, whatever magical ways that he can to, you know, it's kind of an ongoing tribute to uh Mr. Villers.
I'll second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Tar, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on, uh, resignations, um. I have none, but we actually have some here.
Two, the package.
Oh, yeah, okay, so hang on. Uh, two of them. Uh, we have the resignation of Joseph Pinto from the Ansonia Housing Authority.
Motion to accept and send a letter of thanks.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Rivers, all in favor? All right, uh, motion carried. And then uh resignation is the resignation of uh Joey Phoebus from the Cultural Commission.
Motion to accept and to send a letter of thanks for his um time spent.
Motion by Mamon and a second by Tar, all in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. Uh, we have no resolutions tonight.
Last, Steph, can I, I just wanted to mention about Bob Just Gilka. We were just gonna make note of that.
Yes, uh, so um, actually, well, yeah, so um, he. Resigned but rescinded the resignation and we never met in between, so I think we could just move on, right?
Yeah, he gave a notice of resignation, um, which would properly have to be accepted by this board. But the meeting never happened, and so although it was actually put on the old agenda, it was never actually acted on, it never officially accepted, and he withdrew it. So I think that we could note it, but. It never officially accepted and he withdrew it. So I think that we could note it, but it's certainly, you know, it's it's really a, it's really a moot issue. Um there was no approved uh resignation and he since rescinded that uh notice. So he is still, he's still good to go.
Correct.
So, all right, so for the record, thank you.
Yep.
Um all right, so now we have appointments. There were two letters um from the mayor, one dated February eighth and one dated um March eighth. And we have a few appointments, a couple of them are referenced earlier. Uh by the public officials. Uh first one is a Board of Police Commissioners, two-year term. And the candidate Brian G. Douglas, unaffiliated of Two Fanucan Drive, for a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-three.
Motion.
Motion to accept by Cassetti, second by Tar. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Uh motion carries and congratulations. Thank you. Uh commi- Commission for Elderly Services, this is a three-year term. Uh nominee of Kathy Mollner, unaffiliated of eighty-seven Sodom Lane. For a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-six.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by not. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions. All right, moving on. Conservation Commission, uh four-year term. Um the candidate is Daniel Bosks uh or Busquets. Re- uh Republican, ninety-nine Jewish Street, term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-seven.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Cassetti, second by Rivers. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Historical Commission, your term. Uh John Colleen, Democrat of eighty-six Highland Avenue, term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-five.
Motion.
Motion by Rivers?
Second.
Second by Adamowski. All in favor? Opposed or abstaining? All right. Thanks. Uh next one, we have two. Yeah, two uh candidates for inland wetlands. These are both two-year uh terms. First one, uh Dave Connelly, unaffiliated, fifty-three North Prospect Street, uh term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-five. Motion by Cassetti.
Second.
Second by Adamowski. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions. All right. Uh congrats. And the second one is uh Timothy Holman, Republican of fifteen. Fourth Street, Unit Two, uh term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-five.
Motion.
Motion by Cassetti. Second by, sound like Yaman?
That's me.
Yep, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, and then we have one, two, three. Water uh WPCA. Um three-year terms. Sean Massey, unaffiliated, forty-seven Glenn Drive.
Motion.
Motion by Rivers, second by Tar. A note to the the term expiring one thirty-one twenty-six. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions. All right, motion carries. Next one is Frank Ho- Hoiser Junior. Unaffiliated, twenty-seven Prindleb, term expiring one thirty-one twenty-six. Motion by Cassetti.
Second.
Second by not. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions. All right, and the third one is Michael Delesio, Democrat. One sixty-eight Prospect Street, uh term one thirty-one twenty-six expiration. Tar, second by.
Second.
As Adamowski, all in favor? Opposed. Abstentions. All right, and the third one is the Cultural Commission, or last one. This was in the second letter. Um for Commission, three-year term. Um Patrick Buckley, Independent, one eighteen Dickinson Drive, uh Shelton. This is a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-five. That's our placement for the resignation that came in.
Motion.
Motion by Cassetti. Second, second by Janetti. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions. All right. Congratulations to all these people. And thank you. Uh next item is Key to the City. Um I'd like to table this. Um there was a key to the city for uh James Chester, Board of Education. Uh very deserving, but um I want to table this to the next uh in-person meeting. Um because he indicated interest in in uh coming uh to accept that, so. Um just tabling it for that reason.
Okay, so. Um just a quick question. So if um. We are tabling this one. Will we have two uh on the next meeting?
We can have as many keys in the city as we want. No, this is this is, well, this is uh Keys of the City. There's um, I mean, you remember it was individuals, organizations, businesses. Um there's not a limit on. That, so yeah, it could be two people in in the next meeting, could be nobody the next meeting in in this one. Um I just know that uh he wanted to be there in person, so I thought, well, to respect that, we'll just push it, push it off. Because we're meeting virtually.
Okay.
Anybody uh? We're go- go with that? Motion to table?
Motion to table.
Are second by Rivers. All in favor? All right, um. Nothing under ordinance, um new business. There was, this came in, um. The Rise Packet Storefront Loan Application, Pink Gem. Um should we send this to the to the the facade?
Motion to send it to the facade committee.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, um all right, two items under Old Business. First one is uh Cheerleaders Request Update. Kurt, you're still here, right?
I am still here, Mr. President.
Right, and where is our Jamie? Is here, correct? All right, so where do we stand on this?
All right, so um I'll refer you back to communication number three uh from your December board meeting. Um there was a letter that was sent in um requesting funds from uh the board. To help assist in the cost of uniform replacement. Um it has been six years at that point since uniforms had been, new uniforms had been purchased. And the organization was looking for some assistance. Um they did provide some uh receipts or invoices, I should say. Uh totaling eight thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. Uh and and again, I I what I had done was in communications with their treasurer, I had asked them to provide as much information and detail as possible. Um she was understanding that they may not get the eight thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars, and I don't think that's actually what they were requesting. Um but, uh you know, I think they wanted to provide us as much information as we possibly could, so. Uh looking at the sports contingency line, which was initial initially budgeted at uh twenty-five thousand. Uh to date, we've uh put aside four thousand dollars for soccer, two thousand dollars for each season. Uh one thousand thirty-six dollars and ninety-one cents for new helmets for Pop Warner. Um and the current balance of the account is nineteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars.
What could we, uh Josh?
Yeah.
Uh to uh to Kurt, what can we afford to do for them?
Yeah, because we we um we still have other sports um. That's going to be uh coming online because football, it was only the helmets, so.
Reasonable. I mean, what would be a reasonable uh donation for them?
I mean, i- in past, past practice, um has been, you know. About two thousand and twenty-five hundred dollars per organization. Um you did do a little bit more for soccer simply because of the number of kids and multiple seasons. Um that they have, so I don't think there would be any issue um. With, you know, two thousand and twenty-five hundred. Um uh uh of a contribution to them, but I I would certainly. Uh make a allow the the folks that are here from cheerleading to uh to speak on behalf as well, just to see if they may have a different uh. A different thought or something.
So, so, so they're they're totaling about. Eight thousand dollars, right?
Uh eight thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars was the amount of the invoice.
Okay, so so would a a good number be four thousand dollars for them?
A a good number is defined by by what?
By you.
By Chicago.
Well, it it I think I think four thousand dollars is is a very generous donation to them or generous contribution, I should say, to them. Um you know, I do have some concerns about who else may request funds and could that potentially limit down the road. But we are in the, you know, March meeting. Uh we really only have three meetings to go. Only other group I would expect at this point uh would be maybe baseball and softball.
Right.
Forward. Um so, you know, could the budget line handle a four thousand dollar contribution? It it probably could. Um but that's at the discretion of the board.
Kurt, do we have another payout for soccer coming, or do have we paid, made both those payouts already?
Uh we made one payment of two thousand dollars in the fall and then we have an encumbrance for the other two thousand dollars.
Okay, is is the other two thousand in that nineteen thousand or have you factored that out already?
It's already factored out. Yep. We pulled a PO for soccer for four thousand dollars.
Okay, so I'm I'm sorry, Kurt, I lost audio for a second. What is it factored into the nineteen thousand already?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we typically, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say with the exception, it's Tony, with the exception of soccer. With the, obviously soccer out of the way, football, we know is gonna potentially come back. You have baseball, softball. Um cheerleading is never really on the agenda. These guys are, I think, going to states. Um or nationals at this point, I'm not even sure. I don't understand much about cheerleading. Uh Jamie, I know you do, but. Um facing the line that's there, I was gonna, Chicago, I wanted to bump that a little bit more just based on. Again, they haven't been funded in the past like some of these other groups have. I was thinking, you know, somewhere in the area of five thousand.
Okay, I can do that.
Quick question, what do we typically give the others for uniforms?
I mean, at this point, there's really nothing specific. The different groups will make a request.
Yeah.
For a certain amount of funds just to help them offset costs.
Right.
I think what the cheerleaders are doing in their submission. Is just trying to give more backup and more information of the reasons why they're asking for it specifically. That they're having a a need to replace uniforms, so.
Now, I was just curious if we've done that in the past with any of the other teams' uniforms.
So I I I guys, I know Jamie is here and I had a conversation with her at length about some of the struggles that they're having with the uniforms. Jamie, I don't know if you want to walk through just some of the sizing issues and things like that we're having.
Sure, um so last year we had a much bigger turnout than we had in the year previously. Um and try, we were trying to fit the girls and we just didn't have. Needed um as far as who needed what sizes. We had some girls in ones that were a little too small and a little too big. Um and we expect with the pandemic being over that we might have a larger team this year and we're kind of hoping to accommodate. That, you know, we had tried to use past uniforms and some of them were disdained and falling apart, and so we worked kind of with what we had this year. Um but it was a little bit of a struggle, so we definitely need to upgrade and make sure we can accommodate the size of the team that we're gonna get this year.
So Jamie, with the gap of the five thousand minus, I guess, kind of what you guys are up against. Are you guys gonna have issues, maybe either fundraising or, you know, meeting the full budget to get the uniforms you guys are looking for?
And what we're looking to do, we're kind of looking to see what's available for us and trying to gauge what we need to do for fundraising, um. Where we need to price our registrations at, things like that. We understand that we're gonna definitely need to do some sort of fundraising. We just need to know what extent and what's available, seeing what options we have out there.
Yeah, I'm I'm all for the uh five thousand dollars, so.
So Tony, you want to formally uh propose that then?
I got a, I got a, I got a question.
Yes.
I'm all for it too. I was just curious, who do you cheer for now? Is it, is the Pop Warner or?
We're with uh AYC.
Yeah, and not with um with us.
Thank you.
All right, Tony, proposing uh. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna make the motion if Tony wasn't going to.
Okay.
Stop stealing my thunder, Joe.
Come on, man.
See if I can drag this out. I got the over tonight, so I'd like to make a motion to. Um move the five thousand dollars from the sports line or the recreation line as we have it to the uh the cheerleaders of Ansonia.
Uh I'll second.
And motion by Mamon, second by Yaman. Any further discussion on this?
Yes, Josh, um I'm gonna abstain on this. Uh I think, as you know, I I don't believe the Board of Aldermen. Should be involved in the weeds at this. Level of detail on appropriating uniforms for any. Uh team or recreational uh undertaking. Uh I think this is a a matter that would fall under. A recreation director or some designated staff of the mayor to uh make a recommendation on this. Um you know, I'd like to suggest that if there are aldermen that are. Um feel that they want to be involved in a decision like this, that you appoint a committee. And we get their recommendation, but I I really don't think we should be spending a Board of Aldermen meeting discussing. Uh uniforms for um any team and how much uh is gonna be appropriated for them.
All right.
Steve, it was for the appropriation of funds. It wasn't necessarily to discuss the uniforms and that was. This was the pleasure of the board, how we set this fund up and how the funds were to be dispersed, so.
I I understand that and I I'm just opposed to it.
Yeah, I I Steve, that's. But Tony did clarify, you know, it's appropriation of funds at a general level and how they're, you know, if it's a uniform, if it's a helmet, if it's. Ever it may be, but we did take that power, honestly, take the power, but we we kind of took that on. Uh a while back, but duly noted on that and abso- absolutely respect that.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Yeah.
Go ahead.
Youth, right?
Yeah.
Was that the question?
He he cut out. What was the question, Joe?
I was just curious if this, is this for. Uh Ansonia youth or is it for eh uh all other towns in this cheerleading group? That's what I'm asking.
AYC. It's on your youth.
I'm I'm just, so it's all Ansonia residents' kids, right? That's that's my question.
I can't answer that. Um Jamie?
Yes, this is the, it's through the town of Ansonia. It's it were Ansonia Youth Cheer, yes.
I meant all Ansonia kids are on this, correct? Are there other other town kids on it? That's my question to you.
Uh I'm not clear on the numbers. We might have had one or two out of town last year, but I don't know a hundred percent on that one.
It's predominantly Ansonia children, though.
Uh Joe Cassetti?
Yes, uh I just uh wanted to get some background. Are they uh involved in a championship uh competition type thing that they bring uh? Respect uh statewide, nationally, whatever. Are they at that level where they actually compete?
Our D eight level went to Florida last year for national competition.
Representing Connecticut or Ansonia?
Yep, representing Ansonia.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Uh all in favor?
Hi.
Abstentions, one, one one abstention, Adamowski. Uh so motion carries um for the five thousand. Good luck for that. Thank you for coming and and uh clarifying, Jamie.
Sorry, Mr. President. If you just want to reach out. If you just want to reach out to me tomorrow, we can uh, talk to the mechanics of getting the money to you, okay? There you go.
We'll have our sec- uh, treasurer do that, thank you.
You got it.
Did I hear? Jamie, good luck.
Thank you all very much.
All right.
Uh. Josh?
Yes.
Oh.
Did I hear one opposed?
I didn't hear any opposed. I heard one abstention.
Thanks.
Um. And uh, we have one se- a second item under old business that I put on at the beginning of the meeting. Um, was not in your packet, but I received uh, via email. Um, just a couple of days ago, and, and um, this was a, and we have talked about this in the past, so that's why it was, it comes under old business. This was a letter from. Uh, the representative for the piece of property on two eighty-three North Main Street. This is the. Two point three three acres. Um, and the, and I've attached another listing sheet. Uh, the price has been reduced, I think a couple of times. The price is now listed at one hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine. Please put on your agenda for the, for the meeting to purchase the property.
Motion to refer to staff.
Motion to refer to staff by Yaman.
Second.
Second by Adamowski. Any further discussion on that one?
I have some discussion.
Okay, yeah. Um, go ahead.
We've talked about this before. We just sold a piece of property, which I was all in favor of, the Olson Drive piece of property. And the reason, one of the reasons why we sold that and didn't keep it as a park for ourselves. Was we already maintained thirteen parks throughout the city. So what would we go out of our way to buy this piece of property for? And it just opens the door for anybody. That can't sell a piece of property to come beg. And borrow from the city and offer their piece of property at a reduced rate. I'm totally against this. Purchase of this property.
If I, if I may, just to clarify why I made the motion to refer it to staff. Is that I don't necessarily agree or disagree with you, Bobby, but I'm, my, my point was is refer it to step professional staff that works for the city, have them evaluated in light of the plan of conservation and development, determine whether or not the property is useful to the city in some way, and then make a recommendation back to us.
No, I, I, I understand that, Joe. It's just, I think you're gonna wind up where some of that property is what went.
I think, maybe so. I, I, that's why, that's why I refer it to, you know, to Sheila, to John, to staff, to, to make that call, to talk to um, the land use. Um, department and make those determinations, and then let us know what their professional recommendations are rather than us just guessing.
Very good. Thank you.
But I think that is, is this the same um? Property that we talked about a while ago that was.
Yes.
That was useless?
Yes.
Yep.
Exactly, so why isn't it even coming back? That's what I'm saying.
They lowered the price.
Yeah. Don't care. Still don't want it.
All right, well, we'll take their recommendation. Um, and if they may, that may be the end of that, so um, we have a motion to refer to staff in a second. Any, any, anything else? Are all in favor of referring to uh, mayor or staff?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. All right.
Josh?
Yes.
I had talked to you about putting the N V cog in, back on for old business. Can I just bring up a point on that?
Uh, it's not on here, but you can bring up whatever you want, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, I know I emailed you that I wanted to talk about it. Initially, I mean, we liked the intent behind the program. It's become a burden for the residents. Um, they've been incurring extra expenses when it comes to the bags, the. Cans and things that they're having to do. It's extra time, which comes up when people can least afford it. I also think program's been very misleading. It was presented to us as something that was not mandatory and had, we had some discretionary. Some discretion with it. Um, I suggest we gracefully bow out of the program until we can properly figure out if it makes sense for us to go forward and revisit it in the future. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we discontinue the food waste program at this time with N V cog.
Whoa. Uh, okay, so.
I'd like to suggest this be placed on a future agenda. For discussion. And so the public has an opportunity to comment on it as well.
Right, yeah.
We've heard from the public. At nauseam, I've gotten many complaints. I've heard from several people, and we did say we would bring it up at a next meeting.
Give a motion on the floor, Joe.
To you.
Well, I did, uh, uh, um, I, I haven't heard from people because. People on the west side who don't want to do it just don't do it, plain and simple. You know, so, so I haven't heard anything about it.
I haven't heard anything of changing it to a mandatory program. I mean, it.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't heard.
Yes, they, they have said repeatedly it's optional. Uh, we do have a motion to, to, uh, I don't know, what'd you say? Bow, bow out gracefully?
We discontinue the food waste program. Cause we're in the pilot, and then we're scheduled to go into the phase two, which will be costing money.
I will second that motion.
This did not appear.
Yeah, yeah, I think that this has to go on the next meeting because it has to be brought out before the public, so if anybody. Has anything to say about it, they're able to speak because this is at like the end of the meeting. Nobody's here but us.
We have a, we have a motion in a second, but I'm, I'm uncomfortable only not knowing the full terms. I mean, there, there was a, a large document in our packet. That had the contract in there or the, the pilot con- and it, it appears that. Like, I don't even know where we are i- in terms of the pilot. Um, and.
Billy, unmuted.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna breach something to.
Josh.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, through you. I, I mean, we've already talked about uh, discontinuing the program just because, you know. As Bobby said, we don't, we don't really want to burden our, our residents. Who have enough going on in this economic climate, so we're looking into, um, you know, cause it's also with the State Department of the. Energy and Environmental Protection. So we're looking at, you know, and Kurt as well is analyzing the data and. Whether or not that this program is even financially feasible or beneficial for the city. Cause we thought we were gonna have savings. So to, to Bobby's point, I think she wants, you know, would like this board to consider. Of a staff to um. Take a look at, at perhaps terminating this program. If it just isn't working out, and I, you know, we're getting a lot of complaints. Today I had a woman who was beside herself who came in and said, I'm all out of bag. My mother is all out of bags. What am I gonna do? And I. And I said, well, right now they're asking people to purchase the bags, and she was like, but we can't afford that. So, you know, we're getting, we're getting issues with this, and to Bobby's point. We ought to consider whether this is. The best program or not for our residents.
If the motion is for staff to study options, we could report back. That way, to Alderman Adamowski's point, we could, you know, give the public notice to voice their opinions officially. But also we could do so with some knowledge in hand in terms of how, you know, what our options are. You know, we, we certainly have heard a lot of um. A lot of concerning comments from the residents at City Hall and the mayor's office about people that really would like to do the program, or. Troublingly, that feel they have to do the program, and that they simply cannot keep up with the cost or with the additional responsibilities. Um, certainly, this program has very good intentions, and we're, and we're very happy with where the, what, what the program attempts to do. Um, but we understand that there's a very difficult climate out there, and that individuals are having a very hard time keeping up with their own personal business, their family responsibilities. And the costs, as you know, of absolutely everything are absolutely insane. And um, th- there's, i- i- it's very difficult without support, and support was promised. For our everyday residents to, to keep up with this. Um, and maybe additional support could be one of the options. I mean, you'd hope. That there'd be enough bags and bins for everyone, but that hasn't been the case. That hasn't been the reality of this program.
Um.
Alderman Rivers?
Beth had her hands up. She had her hand up. Um, um. To be clear, I was against this from the beginning. But all I'm saying is that. Give the public. A chance to speak on it. And, I mean, if it's up to me, because I don't have no bags in my house. I mean, I got the box. I mean, so if you know somebody who needs some bags, I can give you a box right now. So, it's because that's not gonna happen for me. I, I mean, it's just. For me and for a lot of people. O- on this side of town, I know for sure, I only see a very few people who are actually doing it on this side of town.
Right, and, and the people that speak out against it on social media, there's been hundreds upon hundreds of people. Thread spiral out of control just because. They don't have enough bags. They don't like the program. They don't have a third bin. They don't want, you know, trash hanging around in the summer. Yeah. Seen a lot of folks where, you know, specifically the bags are not durable, so they're doubling and tripling the bags because they split. So. I, I think there's plenty of.
They're being bullied sometimes by getting stickers every time that their bag is not the right color, or even though it's informational, they're feeling like it, they're being. Almost forced to do something they don't want to do.
Yeah.
So, this is a steep point. Uh, I, I mean. It's clearly not a perfect program. Um, and I, I guess my concern is. It is kind of just coming out, out of the, out of the blue for some people, um. You know, i- in the meeting, and I don't know where we stand in terms of what we've committed to in the pilot. Like I said, three months, and then it said there was a, like, there was like four phases or something like that. Where, where do we stand? And we, we've gotten zero reporting in terms of. Did we save any money? Uh, did we hemorrhage money? Um, you know, I mean, all, all those are valid concerns. Um, I, 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 I would add fully support. Um, pushing it to the staff to, to investigate all the options for sure. But as far as unilaterally uh, canceling it on the spot, I, I, I probably won't vote for that, uh, I'd say.
Maybe amend your, um.
We have a motion to.
Want to amend your motion, Bobby? Yeah, I can amend the motion to allow City Hall to look into further. Further review of the current program and. The potential to back out before it costs the city money.
Okay.
Cause we are scheduled to go into phase two, which does have a cost associated with it. Yep. According to the, according to the schedule we, we received, so.
My concerns, I don't even know what, where we are. There was like.
Yeah, we got that in our packet.
Yeah, there was like four phases, and I was like.
Yep.
Are we in phase two? Are we still in phase one? Cause there's supposed to be a bunch of financial reporting at all those. Um, stops, and I haven't seen anything in term, you know. Although.
You know what this is gonna lead to, Josh, right?
What's that? No, I don't.
Okay, we'll talk about it.
So if we could get a recommendation from staff for discussion at our next meeting, I think that would be a. Appropriate way to approach this.
Yeah, if we could just get it on the agenda for next month to. Do what we may.
Or you could do a, a special meeting, as long as you, or, or if you can clarify now on the spot that we're not violating something. I don't want to get sued by, uh, for the trash. I guess that's my, my.
No, I, I, I hear you. I agree. I mean, I, I would amend my motion. Have the city, you know. Take a look at. Again, our progress or lack thereof and potential to withdraw before we enter phase two.
Josh, if I could, I'm act- I met with uh, the folks of the program last week. Um, Sheila meets with them a little bit more than I do, but I met with them just to discuss the finances, so I'll have a breakdown for you. Um, whenever you're ready to have that meeting.
Today?
But, but Kurt, at this stage. I, I know we've had this discussion. You could safely say that we haven't saved anything.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm still crunching the numbers, but what it's looking like is, i- it wouldn't make any sense to move out of the pilot. Um, you know, in fairness to them, they said the pilots are designed to lose money. Uh, because they're trying to understand. Um. You know, how a, a certain community would react, respond, and so on and so forth, and that's great with grant money, but it's absolutely not something we should be doing with city tax dollars. You know, the biggest concern I have is we're spending roughly seventeen thousand dollars a month to sort. The food waste out of the regular garbage. And I, I'm not seeing anywhere near seventeen thousand dollars worth of savings. If anything, maybe we're seeing uh, uh, you know, a twenty, thirty tons at a hundred and five dollars a ton. Uh, we need a lot more tons for it to, to truly make sense, so. Um, plus with all of the other components added in, the need for certain people to buy. Uh, whether it be different barrels, containers, constantly having to buy bags, so on and so forth. I, I, I just don't know if it makes sense for us to, to move forward with it, but.
And Kurt, as people run out of bags as they've been reporting online. They are not gonna purchase the bags as they've said, which means any residual savings that we've started to see is going to tail off.
Uh, correct.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll second Bobby's motion.
So, so Kurt, your, um, your recommendation would be to, to bail out because we're, we've seen no, no savings. Is that?
I mean, I've not seen any savings to date. Um.
Costing us money.
Yeah.
Costing us money, guys. He said that.
Yeah, I, I would probably recommend, um, once I've crunched the numbers a little bit more, that we didn't go outside of the pilot period. There's still a little bit of money left. In the pilot period. Um, but I think to the, the points that were made, if you want to, you know, table this or. Have the discussion at the next meeting, I can have all the numbers prepared, so. That way, if there is any pushback, I can give you the hard numbers.
Exactly.
Of what it will look like, and at that point you can make your decision, and if.
Exactly.
Um, you wanted to end the program, that would probably be a, a wise thing at that point.
That's the best way to do it.
All right, Bobby, it's up to you. It's, it's you. What, what, what did, what do we have going here?
So, I'll, I'll amend the motion to. Have the city look into the cost effectiveness and savings for our next meeting and to advise whether we should pull out prior to phase two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I, I have a question. Um. Can you, can someone from the city, Kurt or John, can we confirm that we're not gonna roll into phase two? In the interim?
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah, we, yeah.
We will not be in phase two when we meet, correct?
We only have till the grant ends.
Correct.
That's the period, period at which.
No, there's no phase two. There's no phase two plan to happen, so no, we're not on the brink of, of this progressing into something else.
Yeah, I believe we have, uh, there's about fifty-four thousand left in the grant. Um, so. And this, the staff is under strict instructions. Do not go one penny above the grant amount, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, motion, second, anything else? All right, so, uh, Chris, Trish, can you read back that motion?
Sure. Um, Alderwoman Tar moved to look into the cost effectiveness and savings. Presented at the next meeting and advise if we should pull out before phase two.
Is that accurate?
I guess authorize, authorize city staff to look into.
authorize the city staff, yes.
Authorize the city staff to look into the cost effectiveness and savings. And at the next meeting advise if we should pull out of the.
Discontinue the food waste program at the next meeting, yes.
All right.
All right, any other comments? Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right. That was painful. All right, um, moving on.
No, for you, not for me, because I don't do bags.
Um. That's it. Uh, we have executive session. We have one item. Uh, under executive session.
What's going to executive session?
Motion by Rivers.
Second.
Second by Mamon. John?
All right, go ahead.
We lost Bobby not again.
Motion to exit executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we had one item under executive session. On negotiation of contract R E, Public Works Director. What's your pleasure?
Motion to proceed as discussed in executive session, Josh.
Uh, motion to heat is discussed by Mamon.
Second.
Second by Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right.
Motion adjourned.
Oh, God.
Oh.
I'm setting it nowhere.
Oh. Fast, fast.
See that, Yaman?
Ooh, long executive session, I'll tell you that.
He is not sleeping. That's great.
Yaman, who's, who's our second on that?
Gotta be the second.
Oh, okay.
Partner, you gotta be faster.
Rivers, I think you were actually third, but I'll, I'll overlook it, and we'll give you a second place on this one. The Swimsuit Brothers.
Yeah.
Favor.
Well, visual. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
All right.
Night.